Good evening. Call to order, the zoning board appeals meeting Thursday, October 16th, at Lakeville Public Library. Our first agenda item is the continuation of the Patel hearing, the 90 Main Street. I believe, the last time we saw you, sir, you want to come on up?
Yes.
We need it to get stamped plans. I think we have stamped plans.
We have a stamped plan.
Somebody in particular was asking, so Jeff, why don't you tell us if we have what we need now?
You have what you need. This is exactly what I wanted.
And nothing else has changed from your application since last time, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, yeah.
So, with that, I encourage the guy that I raped, he wants, he's so inclined to make the motions, and he has what he wants now.
I do it.
I make the motion when you approve this special.
All right, second.
Do we have any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Kathy, can you tell Mr. Patel what's next?
So, we have two weeks to do the paperwork. After that, it goes to the town clerk, where it stays for 20 days, so that if, in case there's appeals, if there's no appeals, I will contact you to come pick it up.
Okay. And then where, what, to the building department?
So, then you would go to the registry of deeds, you record that decision, and then you bring your receipt to the building department.
Okay.
Okay.
And they'll give you a permit, and you'll be good to go.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
Okay, next agenda item. Make sure I do these in the right order here. Yes, okay, so, Lakeville zoning board appeals, acting in force for master and law, chapter 48 as amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October 16th, 7:00 p.m., Lakeville Public Library, 4th Precinct Street, petition of Derek Maxey. Special permit is requested under section 270-4.1 and section 270-7.438, allow construction of single-family dwelling located in the business zone. Property site is 34 Reservoir Avenue, and documents were available to be viewed at the planning department. Good evening, Mr. Maxey.
Good evening, folks. How we doing?
Hang on one second.
Yeah.
What address did you just read? 31 Reservoir. Okay. 31 Reservoir. All right, let's start again. Good evening, Mr. Maxey. How are you?
Good, good evening. Derek Maxey, 55, Long Point Road, Lakeville.
So, why don't you tell us what you're going to do, then I'll read some stuff into the record, and we'll go from there.
Okay. If I may, Mr. Chairman, can I just pass out a copy of the plans? Everybody has them.
Absolutely.
I think you may already have, but it's the two lots, lot one and lot two.
I got them.
You got that ready?
Yep. Yeah, we do have it, but...
Yeah, just a second. Kill some more trees, Derek. You don't want to recycle my other...
All right, so I'll wait for you.
You're good. Go.
Yeah, so basically, the Lakeville Country Club, all the property there is own business, and as you know, everywhere around me is pretty much residential, and all the, on the other side of Reservoir Ave. It's all residential. So, instead of trying to do some business on that road, it's a dead-end road. I think everybody would rather see it residential, so I, I think that's the right way to go. So, I'm planning to put two houses there at some point, but this is the first step.
Okay. Plain and simple, so...
Planning with your approval, I should say.
Can't do much without us, can you?
Right.
Okay, so I do have a letter to read into the record from the Lakeville Planning Board, dated October 6th, and the Thursday, September 25th meeting. The planning board reviewed the above-referenced petitions for hearing for the zoning board appeals. Board supports the petition to allow a residential dwelling in the business zone. Other than that, as the petitioner pointed out, the only reason he is before us is because it's own business, and without us issuing special permit, they cannot instruct anything residential. So, do we have any questions, or... You go see Nancy already?
Concom?
Yeah.
Yes, yeah. And we're actually well over 100 feet from the reservoirs out of there, so we're actually 200 feet away.
Yeah. Well, the other question I have is, it's in the 9th fairway, the 9th fairway, right there. Are the 18th fairway?
The 18th fairway, yes. Yeah, the lot one, the house will be right up near the street, and lot two will actually be kind of around the corner, where it says Posse A.
Because I have a tendency, when I play there, to slice it a little bit, and it ended up where the houses are.
Me too. And we plan to shorten up that, that fairway anyways, for that reason, because right now they're hitting the houses that are prior to that. So, we've already shortened it up, so that would be prohibited from happening.
So, you're going to redesign that to avoid...
Which we've already started doing that, yes.
So, real quick, so, I go down there with my bikes, the girls, all the time.
Yeah.
And we turn around at the gate, right?
Yeah.
So, you're saying this lot two is going to be, how far to that gate, and then how far into the 18th hole will that go?
Yeah, so lot two, the house will go, basically, I'm assuming probably where Posse A is. The gate will actually be, it'll still be there, but it will only be for that house. There's, the gate's not going to be... I know that's a big concern, will traffic come to it? Absolutely not, because this property's going to be, actually take it away the access for there.
Okay. And then, for the usage going forward, you said you're shortening the hole, the golf course behind that?
Modifying, yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, will they still be going through that particular, playing in that area where it's...
Yeah, I don't plan on selling the houses, so we're going to let, it's, they're going to keep, I'm probably just going to rent them out. I want to keep the houses, because it does sound like a course, so I can keep access to that land down below.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Anything, any additional questions? Not yet. Okay. I don't have any questions. Prizes? No?
I have a question, it's really not pertinent, so, it's more of just a curiosity.
Just curiosity.
How do you handle the grade change? It's quite a drop-off.
So, if you were to go to the site, lot one, right now I have the house pretty much staked out. Where it's going to go, it's going to be 40 feet off the street, and that's staked out, and it's going to have, basically, they're both going to have a lot. That one's going to have a lot, the other one will not, because that's pretty much level ground over there.
Yeah.
Anyone in the audience have any questions or want to make any comments? Come on up to the podium, sir. Tell us your name and address, and...
Sure. This may not be the most appropriate question, but anyhow...
Can you tell us your name and address?
Sure. Tom Varakiyoni. I own 16 Reservoir Avenue, together with my wife, and I own 13 Reservoir Avenue, all right. So, my question is, really how this designation of these two housing lots will tie into any future development of the senior housing, because it seems like the 18th hole is really going to be non-functional, you know, with, with any houses built on these two lots, so...
Do you have any, can you briefly answer that question?
Sure. Mr. Chairman, so, there's a pro, a proposal that went Tuesday to the select board and the planning board, and the proposal is to build senior housing, quite a few of, I think it's 424, that's their proposal. But in this case, they're going to convert it down to, it's going to be a nine-hole golf course and not 18. So, they're just going to pick the holes that'll work for it. So, exactly which ones are going to be...
They're probably going to be gone.
It could be gone, right.
So, do you have a plan for the remainder of the 18th fairway that's not affected by 31 and 33 Reservoir?
Not at this, not at this point. There is a, there should be a public record one at the town, because they just met with them Tuesday, but I do not have a plan with them.
Right, okay. And the lots seem to extend into the small ponds that are on the course there. Are there any concerns from the conservation commission, or with regard to the water quality there?
You're right. So, the question is, is it going to affect the ponds at all?
Right.
And the, obviously Concom would not let that happen, and, and we are going to be 200 feet away, and any gutters or anything like that is going to be pitched, obviously, where it needs to go. Nothing's going to go in the pond.
When did you file with Concom?
It's been quite, it's been quite a while now. On this, this one here, I did not file on these two, because they're 200 feet away.
Okay.
Sorry.
You're just, you're talking about the other development.
Correct.
Nothing to do with this board.
Right. So, you're going to be 200 feet away from those small ponds?
Yeah.
Or 200 feet away from the bigger pond that's called the reservoir?
Yeah, we're not close to the reservoir, but we are going to be 200 feet away from, lot one's going to be over 200 feet away. Lot, I can see the line here, I just can't read it, but we're definitely going to be further away, and if there is any concern, I'd have, I would get Concom's approval.
Yeah, I mean, I can't remember the lot in my head on 31, but 33, the, the back line of the lot is right halfway through the pond.
So, sir, are you concerned, your concern for the ponds? Is that what your concern is, or you're just curious?
Well, just to general understanding, it, you know, Mr. Maxey's has had multiple ambitions for development of the golf course property, and this one seems pretty benign on its face, but, you know, knowing that he has broader ambitions, I'm, I'm just curious what, what's in the future, you know, and the ponds... It's hard for me to believe that the house will be at least 200 feet away from the existing small ponds. I can see it, clearly it's going to be more than 200 feet away from the bigger pond, the so-called reservoir.
So, just for your edification, and if we want to question, I mean, I'm often saying 100% right all the time, so I'm awful, somebody keep me honest here, but we're permitting him, we would be permitting him to build a house there.
Right.
He would still have to go through pulling permit and giving plans and designs and whatnot, and in that case, if it was within any setback areas or too close, then the, he would still have to go before Concom and get their approval, because the building commissioner would, would still go through the regular application process. If this, for example, were already zone residential, and he didn't have to come to us, and he went and pulled the permit, he would, if it was within a certain setback area, or the plan showed that it was going to infringe where it shouldn't infringe, he would be required to go before Concom anyway. So, the safeguard is still going to be there. He's just coming to us to see if this board will approve a special permit to allow him to change the use... He's just coming to us to see if this board will approve a special permit to allow him to change the use where it's not, not zoned to be used for residential.
Understood. Just, a lot of my concern is just general concern.
I hear you.
Okay, it's a well-established neighborhood, and it's, it's been a joy to live in that neighborhood for a long time, so.
Understood.
All right, thank you.
Okay. Anyone else have any questions or any?
All of them, go ahead. Do you have any specific timelines, Mr. Maxey, on, like, when you expect to develop it? Are you gonna develop it, like, simultaneously, or?
No, I have no timeline, I, I just knew this was a procedure, because as far as I was concerned, a lot of the neighbors would not want me to do business there, and, which is what's allowed, so in this case, I'm committed to doing the residential, which, which fits the neighborhood better. But I don't know when.
And all, and all the neighbors were notified, so people were concerned, we would have more than two people sitting in the audience, that's my guess. Follow-up questions for any of the board members? Well, I don't have any questions. Usually in these scenarios, I kind of refer to what I just stated, obviously, the neighbors are the ones who would be mostly impacted, and as Mr. Maxey said, most of this area is residential, anyway, it's a golf course, so I don't see any major concerns, but that's just me. Anyone else? So we have a fork in the road, are we either making a motion or we?
I'll make a motion, we approve this special permit to construct a single-family home in the existing building for thirty-one Reservoir.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? I oppose, motion carries unanimously. So if I have Kathy Duiper's spiel, why don't I just take care of the Dupe pit right now?
And I can wave the spiel, I've heard. She's not feeling good tonight.
I'm not waving anything here, anybody coming back, we can probably do something the right way. You don't have to get up and say the same speech again, though, don't worry about it, I'm not gonna make you get back up there. Lakeville Zone Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight is amended, will conduct a public hearing on Tuesday, October sixteenth, Lakeville Library, Precinct Street. On the petition to Derek Maxey for a special permit requested under section two seventy-four point one and section two seventy-seven point four thirty-eight to allow the construction of a single-family dwelling located in the business zone. Property is thirty-three Reservoir Avenue. Application and documents were available with the Planning Department. So is this a duplicate application, sir, other than the address change?
Yes, it is, yes, sir.
Do we have any additional questions in regards to this one? Nope.
No.
Anyone in the audience? He wants to get back up and talk again, I can tell.
I'm just wondering if they're gonna be sliding, just like they're just sitting here.
Well, you can talk to him about what he's gonna put up afterwards. I'll make a money motion?
I'll make a motion, we grant him the special permit to put his single-family home in the business zone.
Thirty-three Reservoir Avenue, do we have a second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries unanimously. All right. Don't go too far there, Derek. Okay, Lakeville Zone Board of Appeals, acting in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter forty-eight is amended, will conduct a public hearing on Thursday, October sixteenth, seven P M., Lakeville Public Library, Fort Precinct Street. On the petition to Derek Maxey, the special permit is requested under the section two seventy-six point three C one and section two seventy-seven point four five C to allow the maximum aggregate of building size to exceed the allowed one thousand square feet. The property is fifty-five Long Point Road. Documents and applications were available at the Planning Department. So before you jump in, let me just read the Planning Board memo from the Planning Board dated October sixth, fifty-five Long Point Road, Thursday, September twenty-fifth meeting. The Planning Board reviewed the above referenced petition. The hearing from the Board of Appeals, the board has no comments regarding this petition, and I believe that is the only, yes, that's the only memo I have to read into the record, so it looks like you wanna make something a little bigger than you were allowed to, so why don't you tell us what you want to do?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Derek Maxey, fifty-five Long Point Road in Lakeville. And if I may, I'd like to just hand out some, just a package, if you could look at it.
Assuming that's what you're looking to build?
Yes.
It's always helpful.
And there's a, also a photo here of the existing house that I live in now, which I'm trying to duplicate that. Hit with the grab.
I assume the first page is reviewed?
Yes, yeah. So I live in a barn, basically. It's the property down by Betty's Neck, the Deekus property, it's, it was one of their original workshops that they had back in the thirties and fifties, and then we converted it into a single-family, one redroom house. Yeah. So, Mr. Chairman, if I can keep going?
Go right ahead, Derek.
Okay, so the situation here is kind of unique. Back in July of twenty twenty-four, I had applied for a building permit to build this garage, and did the, I did some work for it and some, the survey and stuff like that, and then recently, at sometime this year, the bylaw changed to a thousand squi, no, more than a thousand square feet. So the building commissioner thought the best thing to do would be to come in front of this board and explain what we're trying to do. The foundation's actually, actually already in, because I had started this, and this is the, I'll give you the building permit application.
That's all right, yeah.
So because I dragged my feet trying to get this done, it kind of put me in that little dilemma zone, and as far as the building commission, he thought this would be the best approach that way, because even though I, I applied for the permit, I only had like the foundation part of it, part of the permit, he allows you to do that.
You have the foundation permit, you didn't have the regular permit, correct?
Right. Right.
Which is not common for the, for the record, but it also means you weren't grandfathered in before you passed our bylaws.
Right.
So this is on the corner of Long Point and then going into the Cranmere Lodge?
Yes, it is. And there, I have two neighbors, my nephew's one of them, and my daughter's the other one, and I'm surprised they're not here.
Those are the two houses on the left before that?
Correct, yeah. And other than that, there's conservation land behind me, bogs to the right. I'm not encroaching on any of the setbacks on one of the plans, I think it shows I'm quite a bit away from any of the sidelines or frontline. Yeah.
Is the eighteen hundred just the first floor or both floors?
Uh, just the first floor, and I'm hoping to go back to the Planning Board and do an A D U on top. That's why they made comments on this already, because I've been, met with them already once.
How big would this A D U be?
Most of it's gonna be storage up top, but the A D U's gonna be less than the nine hundred square feet.
That's gonna say you, it has to be one of the nine hundreds.
Yeah, correct, yeah.
Nine hundred max.
So that's my dilemma.
That's your, that's your story, okay. Well, does anyone else have, does anyone have any comments or any questions at this point?
Just a clarification on this page.
Yes.
In the red, it says, is it Paul? Is it connected to the existing structure?
That was, that was one of the things the bill inspector said, if I, if I wanted to waive this part of it, then I'd have to connect it to the house, and my thought is, you know, it's a long way to do that just for that purpose, I'm hoping that I can get approved of this tonight and not have to do all that.
Yeah. Hook to the house, then you're all set.
Right.
You don't need us.
But I do need you.
But you're still gonna have, but you're still gonna have the same structure there.
Yes, correct.
And I think I'm, been on the record in the past that, I, I tech, I usually like to defer to the neighbors, I mean, they're the ones who are gonna be most impacted by this, and now that we know it's your family and you probably told them not to come, but that's all right. No. I mean, the neighbors are not opposed to it. You're not approaching any setbacks. I personally don't have a. Sure, if I don't, second. If we don't have any questions, I'm gonna ask the audience, so. Anybody have any additional questions at this point?
No.
Anyone in the audience have a question? Okay, questions are good, Jeff, you good?
Yeah, I'm good.
Jerry, you good?
Yeah, I'm good. Did you already put water to this, or you, you want to do it?
I have an underground pipe going to it, yes.
And then you're gonna attach it to your subject already?
Yes. Yeah, I've already been, believe it or not, the plumbing inspector's already inspected this as well, so this is kind of like a last thing that came up, and Nate just wanted to proceed with caution.
You anyways, correct?
Right, right.
That may be a problem.
It could be.
Yep, not ours, right now.
And this is just for your personal use, correct?
Yeah, yes. I, I have some classic cars that I wanna kind of put in there and.
What kind of cars?
Classic cars, yeah.
Your own personal storage?
Right, yes.
You have no intention of operating a business?
No, no, I have about ten cars now, so. Might not be big enough, I don't need any bigger.
One percent problems.
Yeah.
Well, I.
That's your problem, not ours.
I buy them in rough shape, and then I do most of the work myself on them, it's kind of my, keeps my head kind of going straight.
Well, unless anyone else has any questions, anyone trying to?
I make a motion to you to grant the permit to conduct the garage damage.
Eighteen hundred square foot structure.
It might, it might be a little, it's thirty-six by sixty, what does that come out to?
Is it thirty-six or thirty?
Thirty-six.
We, you make a motion to approve the special permit applied for.
Okay.
That'll be perfect. We have it all on the record, and it's, it's about eighteen hundred square feet, do we have a second?
Second, sixty.
It's twenty-one sixty.
Okay.
I'll second.
That's fine, twenty-one sixty, that's applied for, we get a vote covered. Yep. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to thank this board, the board for being here, I know it's a thankless job sometimes, and I also have to kudos to Kathy, she's, does a wonderful job in the office, so.
You get it approved, man.
It doesn't matter, she does, she's there, she.
Something I will second.
Kathy does an excellent job.
She does. Thank you, thank you very much.
You don't need to tell him, I think he knows. All right. Uh, let's see, so we have minutes from September eighteen, correct? No, I didn't think so. Just thinking, did I miss something? Because I didn't see this in the act, so we will be working on those next time around.
Yes.
Let's see, so a couple of housekeeping items. The first one is obviously LeBaron that we permitted a couple of meetings ago. The board voted to give me the authority to sign the permit when it was, the paperwork was complete, which I did. There was one additional piece that I did not want to sign, although it's closing into the board, the actual, what did we say it was? The actual phase and area plan that needs to be filed with the Registry of Deeds also needs to be signed, so rather than you guys vote to let me sign it, we're all here, so we're all gonna sign it, does that sound?
I can't sign it.
As, as proposed, and yes, Jeffrey cannot sign, he's recusing himself from, from signing that, so I don't think we need to take a vote for this, because we're all gonna sign it, because again, it's not, you're not voting for or against, you're just signing the plan. So we need three of us to sign it, we can do that pretty close to me. The other item that I'm gonna bring up, we don't have other business, but just to point out, I did have Kathy send out, we just received within the past week and a half, or I didn't receive it, but the town received it for the record that we received our housing production plan certification, certification of approval from the Executive Office of Housing in livable communities. This is on record at the town, and basically what it means is, we have hit our ten percent, so we are in a, well, safe haven compliance for two years as of February, which is when that, we hit the ten percent. We are just over at eleven percent. So what I do wanna state for the record, especially because this is on LakePM, is anything that has been applied for permitting at this point, for example, Rocky Village, which is now Simmons Hill, that is not affected or impacted by this. That is already in the process, so that is not something that the town, we could say no to. Just because we're over the ten percent doesn't mean that somebody can't apply or that a board cannot still approve that. What I do caution everyone is, we are over the ten percent, I don't know of anything personally that's coming down the pipeline at this point, but this is, this is fluid, they do this periodically, and as new censuses come in, populations go up, that ten percent number is actually gonna change, so when you're just over it, historically, it normally comes back, and you're under it again down the road, so I just want folks to realize that just because we're in safe harbor doesn't mean that we're good forever and a day type of a deal.
Would that number get reassessed before twenty twenty-seven, or would it always be sub, you know, always after twenty twenty-seven, since we've been approved to twenty twenty-seven?
Would it get approved?
Like what our numbers for the ten percent? Yeah, would our numbers, would the ten percent number be reassessed prior to our safe harbor expiring?
There's a full ex, well, I shouldn't say full explanation, but it gets into a little, a little of the details here, and rather than miss state anything, I'm gonna be very cautious here. Andy was here, I would turn it over to her to make sure I don't misspeak, but it's, again, I, I'm only pointing this out because town received it, a number of folks already know it in town, I think at this point, knows where we are, that we are in safe harbor, that we do not have to approve anything at this juncture, but it's, it's temporary. And again, by the time this got approved, it was, it was February twenty-seventh, it was, I believe it was the, the hospital site which, which put us into it. So we are already almost a year into it, so we literally have, what, sixteen or seventeen months before we're out of it again. And again, don't look at the numbers at that point, but like they said, it's all dictated on percentage of populations, so.
The other two is the ones we approved that we could permit if they don't apply for a building permit in a certain period of time.
You are absolutely correct. Yes, that's a fair point, so as an example, Lakeville Hospital. So if they don't pull a permit, I believe it's a year, a year, so if they don't pull a permit, all those come off. And not to ruin anyone's evening, but just because they haven't pulled the permit doesn't mean their permit, that doesn't mean their, their bigger permit, so the project goes away. So if they could not pull the permit, we're out of safe harbor, and now all of a sudden someone else comes in, wants to build another forty B, and then they decide six months later they're gonna pull their permit, now we can have, you know, it's not like it stops them from doing that, we're gonna have a larger number, so there's a lot of moving parts there, but we, everyone asks when we're gonna get to our ten percent. We are there, we're barely there, but I'm sure it will, it will change in the future, so.
So just for my clarification, the current inventory excludes anything that's proposed with Rocky Hill. The inventory does not include it, and so today, as of today, we are considered in compliance with safe harbor inventory.
Yes.
For the inventory in town today.
Correct, but keep in mind, Simmons Hill's already been in the process, so it's not like we can go to the next Simmons Hill meeting and say, oh, you guys have to stop now.
No, but don't we have more flexibility as to how things progress with a development like Rocky Hill?
I don't believe so, Andy will be at those meetings and will guide us, but it's, it's, the state wants housing at the end of the day, so we're not gonna have a lot of flex. at the end of the day, so we're not going to have a lot of flexibility to say we want you to shrink down the size of it, we want you to, it's what.
Well, I think we should exercise our ability to manage a development if we're in compliance with other state requirements, particularly when it comes to forty B, this is going to be outside, if that permit now changes from a comprehensive permit in forty B to something different, we should be able to manage that development.
Well, it's still a forty B permit.
Okay.
Yeah, no, it's, it's still, it's still protected under forty B.
Do they have the permit?
No.
The permit process, they have applied under forty B, so there are.
So you don't need the permit, you just need to be in the queue.
Exactly.
So we have to continue with this forty B process?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the state, state.
But that would increase our numbers, right? That project if it, if it goes through.
That number's figured in there.
I don't, I didn't see that one listed.
No, it's not. That's why I was asking, is that inventory, is Rocky Hill included in that inventory? It's not.
No, I, I didn't think so, but.
It's not, I don't.
Yeah, no, it isn't.
Okay.
Double checking. The last one here, because they, they do it, yeah, they do it in order, so the last one they have is Cranberry Heights, which is the hospital site. So it is, so Rocky Woods, when that does get permitted, that'll get added to it as well, and that'll be additional, although there's two hundred units at the hospital, so let's assume the hospital doesn't pull permit, those two hundred units come out, and even if Simmons Hill gets approved, like I said, we're just over eleven percent, it's not two hundred units, I don't believe, is it? How many did they say? Was it down to a hundred or something?
It's based on the twenty twenty census, so are you asking for?
Well, no, no, I'm saying the number of units that they're going to have up there, because the number of units versus the twenty, versus the census is how they come up with the numbers, so.
Can you say it?
Can you explain again? So if.
I'm, I'm going to explain it one more time.
For the best you can, well.
The best I can.
So my que, my question is, if, if it's not calculated in, um, that spreadsheet there, it has all the permitted forty Bs, how, how is Rocky Woods, if, if Rocky Woods is not in that, then does that mean it's not permitted?
Correct. It's not permitted, yes.
So even though they're in the queue, if they, if they're in the queue, why is it not like in that percentage?
Because there could, there could be some reason why they, maybe there's a, there's a health danger, you know, and remember, they, it's very, very tough, but it is a public health risk. They turn around and found out it was like arsenic in the water, you know, and there's no way to develop that because it's going to be so dangerous, that it's going to threaten lives, they're not going to include it until it's permitted. My guess is, the theory behind it is if you've put, if you've already put in and you've spent money and time and effort going through the process, just because you get a number, they're not going to stop that, they're not going to stop that entity from going in, right? And you could, you could have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars or whatever, and this number comes out, and now all of a sudden, sorry, we're just going to say no, because we want to say no. Again, remember that the state is driving housing. They're going to do anything they can to, to, to allow that to happen.
Yeah, but, but that's the purpose of our existence, is to control what we want to have developed here. And if we meet compliance, then we should be able to control what gets permitted.
Yeah, I just looked up the law, the safe harbor is not retroactive.
Say that again?
The safe harbor is not retroactive, just like you said, if they apply before we get safe harbor, then they're in.
Yeah.
For potential approval.
The problem that you and most people are having, and I, I tend to agree with you in theory, is that someone else is dictating how we can regulate our community.
What I'm saying is that the handcuffs that are placed on us.
Yeah.
For forty B development.
Yeah.
It should be loosened, because we are above compliance, so therefore, we can put more boundaries.
But they are loosened.
Around a permit.
They're, they're not loosened, that is dictated by the state.
But I guess maybe, are you alluding that maybe if we deny something, the state would be more inclined to not just favor and side with the developer in this case, because we've already reached safe har, safe harbor?
You asking me or you?
I was asking Jerry, is that what, because I mean, ultimately, if we deny something in the appeal, normally what would happen is the state would side with the developer, right? We haven't reached safe harbor.
My understanding is that's still going to be the same scenario.
But I was wondering if that's what Jerry was maybe thinking, that.
I think we should be allowed to have more influence on what gets developed at a site like that, if we are, if this town is in compliance with the state's.
Oh, no, I completely agree with that, too. I just don't know if that's.
So instead of getting it pushed down that we're not, and therefore you must, it should be more that we will consider. So that's just my position. That's not my formal position.
No, I don't know, maybe I didn't express myself correctly. I agree with you, unfortunately, to your point about our handcuffs, it's almost like you've tied our hands, but now we're there, loosen it a little bit. No, we loosened it at all, we're gonna, you guys still have to operate the same way you did, because they've already applied for it.
Okay, then why have a, a threshold anyways?
Well, the next.
We'll have no compliance.
Well, say another one gets applied for next week, then.
Chris is right, if somebody wants to, just because you're hitting the threshold doesn't mean we still can't accept forty Bs. We could turn around and be at eleven point two percent, and we have nothing in the queue, but we, you know, we're reading the tea leaves and know, listen, we know that census is coming down the road, and our population is going to jack up, and we know we're going to be under the eleven percent, and we have what they call a friendly forty B coming in. Do we work with that one, or do we say no, and then wait for someone to come in after the new numbers are, who we don't want to work with, and is basically going to thumb it nose at us and say, we're going to do whatever the heck we want to do, because you can't stop us, because the state's going to allow us to do it anyway, so.
I just feel like your position is that it doesn't matter. It does, we don't have any kind of say.
I don't think we have any say until we get to over fifteen.
That's what I'm saying.
Fifteen percent.
Why not twenty? Why not thirty? I mean, why don't, why even have ten? What's the point of having a compliance threshold if we, they can just do another forty B development and we can't?
No, 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 it was my point, the compliance is ten percent. My point is when you're only a little bit over, historically, it's always, it's going to come down, because when the new census comes out.
Fine, when that, if that happens.
Right.
And if that, when it happens, right, then the board, this board would consider a different comprehensive permit, forty B. What I'm saying is, why can't we have more control over now Rocky Woods?
Because they've already applied.
And per se, I'm just making an example of Rocky Woods, because we're over that threshold.
I'd love to have more control, but we don't, because they've already applied.
What's our, what's, what are the circumstances by which if we said it doesn't fit with the character of that area, and therefore?
They're, they're protecting the same forty B guidelines as.
What the implications if you say no?
Same implications as before, they'll turn around and say, we're going to go to the state, and the state's going to approve who we applied for. I mean, unless.
Despite the town is over, it's threshold.
Yes, I can guarantee you.
Which is why I'm asking why have a threshold.
Well, because if another one gets applied for next week, then we have the power to say no, and the state would back it down.
If somebody applies next week that we don't like, and does a really terrible job, and, and has, you know, whatever the reason, we can, we can say no now, if somebody wants to apply next week.
Why can't we say no to Rocky Woods?
They've already applied.
Doesn't matter.
Well, I think that, I know.
I'm not, I'm not here to dictate timelines or all that stuff.
Kathy, I haven't done this, I've never done this, but didn't my predecessor used to say, I'm going to give you some homework?
I. I know, I looked it up. I'll give you homework.
I looked it up, I was disappointed, too, because I was.
I was very happy when I saw this email today, and I think this is fantastic.
I know.
This board won't have to do comprehensive permits for two years.
If you come back and find a loophole in the law that says we can say no to Rocky Woods, I will support it one thousand percent.
I think we're always within our right to say no. That's why we take the risk of saying no, particularly if we're under compliance. But I think if we're over compliance, we provide conditions, reasons of why we deny a permit.
We can solve this very easily.
And I'll do my homework to.
You don't even need to do your homework. We're going to ask Amy, and scout that till she will tell us whose interpretation is